I'd call it a Stigler Board of Education regular meeting to order for Monday, December 8th, 2025 at 5:30. Those in attendance, board members in attendance, Carly Staubfeld, Kenny Whitson, and David Huggins. At this time, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer by Rebel Hanson.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God and heaven, I wish y'all to wish them boys over there playing ball good luck. Hope you get in. Keep a good eye on this fella driving home during the night. Don't let nothing bad happen. Keep this meeting on a smooth track and hope we get it all figured out. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Approval of amendments of the May 10th, 2025 meeting?
Any changes?
No changes.
Make most approved minutes.
Our second.
Motion by Kenny to approve the amendments of the November 10th, 2025 meeting, seconded by Carly. Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And David, yes. Approval of the conferences and change orders.
Okay, first one, kind of a big one, 294, that's the whole truck, that's for a brake booster, hydraulic brake booster. People said we needed to have it. We do want to stop, but those are pricey.
Can it hold the floorboard?
Be a Flintstones?
295, that's a library book order for middle school. 299, that is out of our Reading Sufficiency or Strong Readers Act, and that's, those books are, they're basically, they're written to apply cumulative phonics. So that's that. Let's see, 301, that's out of the FCC LA 412. 303, that's a gas line to the science room at the high school. 307, that is out of 412 account for the tech ed. 310, BSN, that's partial for the football uniforms. We'll play half and then the booster club's paying the other half. Now, the next two, the next one Webster, excuse me, 311, that is for the middle school walk-in unit, the outside condenser and then the compressor. 312, we're about 4.3 on our general fund. Last year, we were about 3.7 at this time, so we're in good shape there. Building fund, we're at 1.7. Last year at this time, we were about 2 point, about a little less than 2.1, but you know, we finished up that building, so that was that. So right now, we're in good shape. We really haven't got much. Like our property tag, because we haven't got any red bug yet, so that will come up. One that looks bad is child nutrition, but each year, we go through this time of the year, we have to get our application approved before they're going to reimburse us anything, and it takes a while. So we haven't been reimbursed yet for September or October, except for the after-school program last year, but it, believe it or not, actually, we're up a thousand from last year. Last year, we were at 22,000. Overall, we're in good shape and everything is pretty solid. And that is the financial reports.
Okay, public comment. The Board of Education advised public comment at this point in the regular meeting. A, comments concerning agenda items in accordance with policy B, D dash R. There's no one here for that. Information items. A, superintendent's reports.
Okay, we're already one week from the Christmas break, counting, actually, two weeks counting this week, but, and for Christmas break and our fall semester, the year is going quickly. Have a lot going on, activities for our Christmas activities and plays and things like that. The high school speech team will perform their Christmas play tomorrow during the day for the elementary school, and tomorrow evening at 6:30 PM for the public. Welcome to join us for that. The speech team, you know, each year, they donate, donate all the proceeds for this play to the pride of Christmas presents for those in need, so we really appreciate Ms. Parsons and those kids for doing that each year for a very worthy cause. Also, the band is having its Christmas concert next Monday evening, December 15th, at 6 o'clock for the 7th through 12th grade. The 5th and 6th grade band concert is this Thursday at 6:00, and the jazz band will also play tomorrow at the community Christmas tree lighting ceremony at 5:30. High school basketball season started. Boys won their first game, girls lost, but I think it's going to be a good season. They played well, and I'm kind of excited. Tonight's their opening. They play Poto at home, so we're hoping for a couple wins there. Both teams compete in the gore tournament starting Thursday at 3:30, and girls and boys will both play Shoto. The bid opening for the grade school remodel, the 1st and 4th grade, will be at 2 o'clock on December 18th. It's a week from Thursday. This Thursday is a pre-bid meeting, pre-construction meeting, and all that's at 2 o'clock. So hopefully, our bids will come in, you know, closer estimates, and we can get actual construction started around the first year, so we're excited about that. I remember, I don't know, a month or two, we talked about redoing the bus hoods. We got our first one in. See, this is the fore picture, and this is our after picture. You can see quite, quite a difference. And I know it looks kind of orange, but that's just the shadows. Can you see that? We didn't paint that, and that looks kind of orange. They really look good.
Good.
I mean, if you go from that to that, it's, it's quite a difference. So we're real, we're going to kind of rotate them out. People's taking one, bringing another one back each time. How many we have, four to do?
Seven.
Seven to do.
How quickly does that paint start coming off of those?
On, on, on the Bluebirds, they had a run of buses probably about five years in a row. We're not the only ones that the hood's done that to. The big deal was when they all started doing that, when you go to a ballgame or something, the bus drivers would get out and say, well, I see you blow the paint off your hood trying to get here too. It wasn't just our buses, it's just about
Bluebirds.
Nine-year period, Bluebird, everyone their hoods done it.
That looks a lot better.
Does look good.
Yeah, definitely.
It's worth, it's $800 to the hood, but it's worth it.
Good job, good job. Okay.
That is the superintendent's report.
All right, action topics. Action may be taken. A, consideration approval of change of venue for the junior, senior prom for the 2025-26 school year.
Okay, the high school's proposing a venue change to help lower the cost, overall cost, and reduce the time required for decoration and cleanup. We have Mr. Shepherd and Ms. Gilmore kind of present some information and answer any questions you might have and kind of, kind of go through that a little bit.
Thank you, sir.
Stand here and present it?
Sure, be great.
All right, so thank y'all for letting me come in and kind of go over this with you all. I, first, let me say that when things like this are presented to me about any kind of a, a change, I'm always the, the naysayer. I always try to come up with, well, what's going to be the most negative thing that we can throw out. And so I, I immediately started in with things that I could think of. And then we, we had a meeting with the junior class sponsors, and Ms. Gilmore was, was there also, and at the end of the meeting, they had kind of alleviated all of my negative thoughts and kind of started to sway me the other way. So I was never against the venue change. I just wanted to make sure that all of the questions got answered and all of the thoughts that any other parent or any other stakeholder would, would have were addressed. So after that meeting, we had a, a Google form was sent out that had, and there, there'll be a little, a little sheet in this packet here also, a Google form sent out with questionnaire to parents, and there was a great response from that, and it, they were able to ask questions on the Google form, which we later had a meeting with the junior and senior parents. They were able to come and attend a community meeting and address all of the questions, and by the time that we left that night, I feel like everything was answered, even, even some of the ones that were answered maybe to the venue change were then their, their doubts were kind of alleviated and gone. So just quickly run through this. This was what the junior class sponsors presented that night to the, to the parents, and it was just a basic welcome. They wanted to know why the venue change was needed, and said, we feel based on past experience that switching locations would elevate prom to an even more classy level and save in time and additional funds for preparing for the prom. Now, in the past, the prom has been, of course, way back in my day, it was where the library is, but, you know, it's been a lot of different places, and now the, the church has graciously let us have it down there for years, which is great. But I haven't been a part of the process or the decorating or anything like that. From what I understand, it's, it takes quite a bit, and it takes a lot of bodies, it takes a lot of effort. And last year, I believe that we had to rent some stuff to, to cover the ceilings, some scissor lifts and stuff like that, so, and that's, that's in the cost here. But in comparison, similar schools around, they, they all have, go to different venues. So it's very, seems to be very rare that someone actually hosts, in this area, somebody will host one at their own school. And if you turn and look at the, the page that's got the pictures there, you can see the Assembly of God gymnasium, what the floor looks like, and then the proposed venue is Overstreet Farmhouse, which it is basically, it has a Kyoto address, but you go to Salasaw Y and take a left, and it's, it's about 31 minutes from the school. And there is a map there to also show that. The Google results from the, the, that was sent to the parents shows that a majority of them would support the venue. There was a, a small number of no's and then a number of maybes that actually did show up to the, the meeting, and they got to address their concerns with that. And if your student does, does not drive, are you comfortable with them driving to the venue? And that was a guess.
How many, how many people were involved in this survey? Did you have all the, everybody involved in it?
Yeah, there, there was a, the survey, there was, there was a lot that, 78 responses, I think.
How many juniors and seniors are there total?
Total, there's more than 78. I'm gonna say there's probably around 100 and, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say 160, 170.
Half.
Yeah.
Half of them.
If student does not drive, would you be comfortable utilizing bus transportation? And that was a, we got some yeses on that, so that tells us that some of them would like to have some transportation to and from if needed, and we'll be able to try to provide that. The page where it has the gym and the venue, I'll just kind of go through those little bullet points real quick. The gym last year, from what I understand, the cost to rent the two machines, the, the lifts to cover the, the ceiling for 500 apiece, so that would have been $1,000. Additional fabrics, 500 to 600. It says the parachute is falling apart. And the timeframe that it takes to cover and decorate, they start on Wednesday in the evening, probably after church service is over, and goes Thursday and Friday. And this is utilizing parents, staff, students, everybody that we can get to, to make it look, look great for the kids. Using the venue, it'd be $800 for the Saturday, an additional 500 for Friday, which we believe that we can get it all decorated in one day, and we won't be having to take students out of class, we won't be having to get substitutes. And, you know, those two things to, to me as the principal is, is pretty big, not having to find people to cover classes for, for two or three school days.
So would students go on Friday to help decorate?
Students probably will, but the venue is going to take a lot less decorating.
Right.
And it's going to take, it's going to take less time, probably, and they're going to have decorations there for us to use. So we really think that we can, if we do use students, it will be minimal compared to what it was.
And will we use like school transportation, like a group go over on Friday, or will they drive themselves?
Uh, we can probably arrange to take.
I think we'd take a bus. We figured, yeah, that would be a bus.
Yeah, we, we would probably arrange for them to go over there and just spend the day. Yeah. Some of the questions that, that we got from the forum was, some of them that I came up with is what I call the naysayer, is the safety of traveling. Okay, that's, that's the one thing to throw in. You throw in the fact that, okay, well, now our kids are going to have to drive to a destination. And that was my, my big thing when we went in, and honestly, they would be driving to the destination. You know, it would be a light of day when they're driving over there, and I wasn't aware of, of kind of how it all worked, but I guess after prom is over, the majority of them go to Fort Smith and leave when the prom is over or after they're done with the prom, and that kind of, they're already halfway there, so they don't have to leave from Stigler and drive an hour. They're going to drive the 25 minutes on into Fort Smith if that's what they're choosing to do. The cost for the venue versus the use of the church. Now, there's just a little sheet there that just kind of compares the cost of it, and if we had to rent the scissor lifts again and do everything that they did last year, then everything's going to kind of break even or be even a little bit less for getting the venue versus the church. The transportation, we'll be able to take a bus and transport kids that don't have a way over there, get them to and from. And parents helping in decorating, that's going to be, of course, the, I believe the juniors will do that. But I, we really think that it's going to cut down on the amount of people. I mean, we'll take all the help we can get, obviously, but I think that it will be a lot less, and I think a lot of the big things were covering the ceilings and the floors and the walls at the gym, and this place, you don't really, I mean, I, looking at this picture, I wouldn't think you'd have to cover a whole lot. It looks like, it looks like a nice place. And then security, we will be able to, we were speaking with Gary Ballinger, and I've talked with Officer Edwards, and we will have security on site. Officer Edwards today told me that he would be there for sure, and we possibly get one other. And I told Mr. Ballinger that we'd be in touch to see kind of what we would need a little closer to time, but he assured me that they could get everything covered, and so we would have even some additional there.
Do you have any, I guess, consent forms going to give out to parents for them driving to this venue, or are there any forms that you're going to have? Since you just got half of the, or less than half of the response back on the Google form, is there going to be any type of, I guess, thing going out to all the parents, especially the kids that are driving?
We will definitely be in contact with parents about, yeah, we, as far as a, as far as a document to have the parents give consent for them to drive, I mean, we can certainly send something like that and.
I guess as a board, since they're bringing this to the board, that our approval is going to give these students permission to drive their vehicles to the venue?
Well, I think more is just going to be, we can have it there. I think, just like you said, I think they're going to have to have every parent sign something.
Yeah, there's going to have to be something. For me to jump, to do this, I mean, we're going to have to have something more than, than, okay, we're just going to allow 150 kids to drive to, all the way down to, instead of right here in town. Once they leave this venue here in Stigler and drive to Fort Smith, but driving there and then leaving there and going to Fort Smith, it's two totally different things to me. So, I mean, I'm, the safety of the students is my first and foremost thing, that every parent knows and can sense to them driving their vehicle to that venue.
Do you know how many students went to prom last year?
I think we had around 120, maybe a little bit less, maybe 110.
Well, we can certainly get permission forms and permission slips from each student.
Okay.
I don't see that that would be, be an issue. Also looking at possibly making it a little bit earlier, just from 6:30 to 9:30.
Yeah.
I believe that in the past, most of the students are out of there by 9:30 anyway and going wherever they're going afterwards. And I don't see that that would be a big issue to do in 30 minutes. Driving options, children can drive, they can drop them off, pick them up. Bus transportation, and then the limo rentals deal, that was just, that was mentioned because I guess there would be enough space for a limo to pull up and everybody make their grand entrance and get out, and, and that might have been an issue at the church.
I have a question. This is just y'all's opinion on this, like, the fairness, I understand life's not fair, but there's a percentage of the kids who are going to go in limos and party buses, so that's, seems safe, but then the kids who have to ride the school bus, like, how are they going to feel when these kids are in a party bus and we're riding the yellow school bus to prom? Have you thought about, like, everyone has to ride the bus? I mean, but then you have kids who don't want to ride the bus in their prom dress. I get both sides of that, just like your thoughts on like,
Yeah, I mean.
How many of our kids are going to get to take a limo on a party bus, and how many of theirs, they have to ride the school bus? And it's like, the fairness of, like, oh, I had to pull up to prom on the school bus, and these kids are pulling up to prom in their limo and party bus.
Yeah, and I mean, it is, it is something to, to consider, but, you know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to leave anybody out.
Right, no, yeah, I agree, you have to, have to offer the transportation.
I think all we've got is probably, the only option that we would have would be a bus, right? Yes, it would have to transfer, transfer anybody.
We could use an activity bus, but regardless.
We could use a bus.
Yeah.
Yeah, regardless, it's a bus.
It's the safest.
Do you think you'd have less people if you made it mandatory that everyone had to ride the bus?
I think yes.
Yeah, well, and then, I mean, that would bring up an issue of, you know, their destination afterwards. Which I didn't, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to think of it because we weren't, when, when I did it, we didn't have a destination afterwards. We didn't go anywhere. I mean, we went, we went to somebody's barn or something like that. We, we weren't going to Fort Smith or anything. So.
So out of the 78 responses, it looks like about 10% of them were maybe or no.
Yes.
So out of those 78, you got about 68?
Yes.
That said yes, they would go to this out of 78. So you, I mean, if, if that's all that, you didn't get, you sent this to all those juniors and seniors, right?
Yes.
And so you just got 68 that said that they would go.
Yes, we sent it out two separate times to junior and senior.
So you've got 100 that didn't even bother answering it or didn't respond at all.
Correct.
So I wonder, they're not even planning on going at all if you don't, if you have it there, I guess, is, I, you, you see what I mean?
Yeah.
You had 120 here, and according to this, you're going to have 60, 65 to 70 there. So half of them that went last year basically either aren't planning on going or didn't take the time to take this to say they were going to go. I mean, you, you, I guess that's kind of my,
I think.
I mean, if this, if you had 120 on here.
So would you guys feel a lot better if we had more response, right?
Yeah, if you had more response, and if you had the consent form.
Because then the parents would say, well, I didn't fill it out, and my kid can't go to prom, and then some of these kids, like, that's the biggest thing they're going to get to do in their life is go to Stigler prom.
I think the issue is, is like, parents get so many of those text messages all the time, and they're just like ignoring it sort of thing. So we could send home.
We tell the kids, like, yeah, do these, have y'all done just like a survey with just the students?
No, we haven't.
Like, if they're the majority of one, then, if the majority of the students want to have it at the venue, then, okay, then you need your parent to fill out this. If this is what you want, then we need you to make sure your parent fills out this survey. That might help.
That makes sense at all. I mean, you see our concern with it and, and leaving kids out, like Carly was saying, and so, and like you were saying, maybe they just overlooked it or didn't read it or something, but.
Or they just think, oh, I don't have to fill that out, and those parents are.
Yeah, or they just don't care. I mean, they just, go ahead and go, I don't care where's that. I mean, you're going to have people like that. Yeah, exactly. But I, I, yeah, you're going to have the other way.
And then alcohol, are we going to have any, like, if you're getting on a school bus to check to make sure they're not taking alcohol on a school bus?
If I have to ride the bus.
Yeah. I mean, we all know what kids do before prom.
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
And I understand you can't, I mean, you can't control it at the church, like, what, what they do before, but if they're riding on a school bus.
Safety will be the number one concern, and it was when we all went into the first meeting, it was the concern of the parents to show up to the community meeting. So we're still, we're still looking at addressing the things that, that need to be. I mean, this is a, this, this would be a first-time deal.
If the prom isn't till.
April 11th.
April, so if we table this today, you guys can bring it back to us next month with, you know, you get, here's the consent forms you sent out, here's the number of people that we do say that are going and, and all that. Is that?
Yeah, we, we can come back with.
Okay, perfect.
Have you considered it? I mean, there's not that many options in Stigler, but options where you don't have to do the parachute.
We are more than open to any other options. This was just like the closest venue we've found.
Yeah, I, yeah, I understand the decorating is a lot.
The only other thing we even halfway considered was the middle school cafeteria, but it's just small, and I don't know that it would.
Yeah.
I know, I've been trying to think too.
Well, I think, I think, I mean, if you want us to pursue getting the consent forms and, you know, we can, we can do another questionnaire. I'm kind of a statistics guy, so I would like a number of what we might think would be a good number for us to, to hit, because obviously, we're not going to get 100%.
No, you won't get, but I think you should get over 50.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I think you should get over that for sure. I mean, 50 yeses, you know, you've got.
Or maybe even send out to the students, like, are you planning to attend prom? Yes or no? And then the ones who, then you can say, you know, 100 kids said yes, I'm attending to plan, attend prom, and then, you know, if a. And then, you know, if a hundred said yes, and then we have a hundred responses, that's more of a, okay, most of the people that are planning on going. Because we don't know, who knows if these other people are or not planning to go.
What about losing the date for the place? Do you, is there a possibility you could lose the date?
Right now, Ms. Gilmore's got it. They said that they would hold it for us right now, but I don't know if they will for I don't know.
Well, I think we're going to have to try, because we we need you guys to feel comfortable with the decision.
Yeah, I mean, I, if I'm going to make a mistake, I'm going to make a mistake on the side of the kids. I'm not going to make a mistake on letting the kids go and somebody get hurt or something happened, or some not be involved, or some got left out because they couldn't make it or didn't want to ride the bus, you know, that they could walk up here to someplace. You 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 know what I mean? That's that's where I want to make my mistake at. I don't want to make it with somebody either getting hurt or another issue happening. So if you'll get this stuff, I think that'd help me for sure.
Okay. We can do that. What we'll do is we'll, we'll hit this pretty hard before break, and then the week that we come back.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, I think the week we come back and then that next Monday will be the.
Yeah, so it'll be, I mean, we don't, it seems like we have a while, but.
No, we don't.
We really have three weeks of school that we need to hit it.
Yes, so so we will probably hit this pretty hard this next, this next week and push to get responses back.
Okay.
And that way, we can get it back on the agenda for you guys and come back in and and present it, we'll present the numbers to you and we'll present all of that. If you have any other questions or anything, you know, we'll, we'll get those.
Yeah, if you guys think of something, just send them to me.
Okay, I'll give them to you.
And we just, we want, you know, we we want the kids to have a a nice venue, a good time.
Yes.
And everybody to be safe. And so any concerns or anything that we can take care of, and then we'll definitely do that.
Okay.
We appreciate the hard work on it, I know it's a lot of work.
They did all, yeah, they did all the work. Gathering all the dates and all that. I mean, you guys have got several days worth of stuff here and to get together too for us even to, so. I appreciate your help and your concern about the kids and their happiness and well-being and all that. We do appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm headed to the ball.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore.
Thank you. So I make a motion to table the changes of the venue for the junior, senior prom for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
A second.
Motion by Carly to table the change of venue for the junior, senior prom for twenty twenty-five, seconded by Kenny and Carly.
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. B, consideration of approval of destination charge for end-of-year destination change for end-of-year high school band trip from Nashville, Tennessee to San Antonio, Texas. Also approval of additional fundraiser to help offset the rising cost of this trip.
Okay, in the July meeting, we approved the trip to Nashville, and the band would like to amend that and go to San Antonio where it's a little bit cheaper, they don't have as many going, so it's it's taking a little more money. So they'd like to go somewhere a little bit cheaper and then an additional fundraiser to offset the cost of the trip. And I would recommend we approve this request.
And these these students will all be riding the bus, right?
They will all be on the bus. I believe it's a chartered bus.
They'll all be on the bus.
They'll all be on the bus.
I make a motion that we approve the destination change for the end-of-year high school band trip from Nashville to San Antonio and the approval of additional fundraiser to help offset the cost.
I second.
Motion by Kenny to approve the destination change for the end-of-year high school band trip from Nashville, Tennessee to San Antonio, Texas. Also approval of additional fundraiser to help offset the rising cost of the trip. Seconded by Carly, Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
David, yes. Uh, C, consideration of Stigler Public Schools' transfer policy and establishment of district capacity limits.
And this is our required quarterly review of the current policy regarding student transfers and our capacity levels. I don't see that we need to make any changes to the policy at this time, and I recommend we approve the current policy.
I make a motion to approve the Stigler Public School Student Transfer Policy and District Capacity Women's Art Estate.
A second.
Motion by Carly to approve the Stigler Public Schools' Student Transfer Policy and Establishment of District Capacity Limits, seconded by Kenny, Carly?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. Executive session, A, proposed exec executive session to discuss and act upon the following business pursuant to twenty-five O S three oh seven B one of the Open Meeting Act. One, assessment of the performance of Superintendent Tom Kettles and renewing of his contract for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year. Two, discussion to employ a grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Make a motion to convene an executive session.
A second.
Motion by Kenny to convene to an executive sec session, seconded by Carly, Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And David, at six oh seven P M. Are you there? Okay, six thirty-four.
Make a motion to return to open session.
I second.
Motion by Kenny to return to open session at six thirty-four, seconded by Carly, Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And David, yes. Members present during executive session were Carly Stubblefield, Kenny Whitson, and David Huggins. Superintendent Thomas Kettles was also present for executive session. No motions or votes were taken during executive session.
Make a motion to renew Superintendent Dr. Tom Kettles' contract for three years for the, starting in twenty twenty-six.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two.
I second.
Motion by Kenny to approve Dr. Kettle renewing his contract, starting in the twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Seconded by Carly, Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And David, yes.
I make a motion to approve the employment of Colby Ross as grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Second.
Motion by Carly to employ Colby Ross as a a grade school custodian for the remainder of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, seconded by Kenny, Carly?
Yes.
Kenny?
Yes.
And David, yes. New business.
No new business.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion to adjourn by Kenny, seconded by Carly, at six thirty-six. Kenny?
Yes.
Carly?
Yes.
And David, yes.